Call the meeting to order, everyone please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Barr?
Here.
Mr. Popovich?
Here.
Mr. Mendela?
Here.
Mrs. Dye?
Here.
And Mr. Secala?
Here. Okay, so our first order of business tonight before we open up the meeting for comments from the public for items on the agenda, I would like to welcome the Slezak family. Mr. Victor Slezak is here, he would like to address the board and the community, so please step onto the microphone.
Thank you. Is there a podium there?
Yeah, that would be great.
Oh, great, okay. In our family, we say "Slezak."
Sorry?
And everybody does it, so. Mr. Featherman, I thank you and the board for giving me this time and allowing me to speak this evening. I am notoriously bad with dates and time, but there's one date that's been burned into my memory. December 13th, 2014. On that Sunday afternoon, a nightmare began for my son and my wife that lasted for a better part of a year. Alex said he was not feeling well, and in the middle of the day, he asked to go to bed. Later that evening, he complained of his knee hurting him. I lifted his pajama leg to find his right knee had blown up three times the size of the left. Over the next several weeks, Alex went from being an honor student, an active athlete who had just made the basketball team, was coming off in a successful baseball team, to being bedridden for weeks and months at a time. Through my wife's diligence, we discovered that Alex was hit with a recurrence of Lyme disease. We tried to keep his life as normal as possible, to get him to school when he felled up to it, but the time came when it was obvious that he was no longer, that was no longer possible. I'm here with Leslie, my wife, Alex, my son, to publicly acknowledge and thank Principal Decort, Ms. Demarsico, Ms. Slota, for the help and support that we received from them during a horrible and trying time. The actions, integrity, and kindnesses of these three educators have touched my family and me so very deeply. When it was obvious that Alex was no longer able to attend school, Mr. Decort set up a conference where we could make a plan going forward. During this time at home, we were witnessing and dealing with symptoms that were like something out of a horror film. Alex lost the ability to walk, unaided. There were days when he spoke with a slur as if he had suffered a stroke. He would be in agony from painful attacks to his joints, migraine-like headaches. He lost his ability to write or think, and many days, he could do nothing but lay in bed and wait. Yet there were days when he looked like the picture of health, which in some ways was worse because it gave us false hope that his ordeal was over. These were terrifying and confusing times. It was hard to describe to anyone what Alex was going through. At that meeting, I read the research that Nurse Demarsico had done. It itemized many of his symptoms that were confounding us. The work she had done paved the way for his teachers to understand what they would be dealing with. From the Lyme community and friends with children hit by Lyme, my wife and I had heard horror stories about how school systems have treated students with Lyme, completely misunderstanding what was happening and putting the child and family into further turmoil. Ms. Demarsico nipped all of that in the bud and put us and the school on the right track immediately by going straight to the heart of the matter with up-to-date information on how this disease is hitting young people today and state-of-the-art recommendations on dealing with students in school with the disease. Principal Decort put together a 504 plan to protect Alex under the Civil Disabilities Act that came in handy on several occasions because of the misunderstood and confounding disease that Lyme still is to doctors, let alone teachers and parents and classmates. Ms. Slota became the liaison between us as a family and the administration and faculty, again, a very difficult job because of the nature of the disease. When it was clear that Alex could no longer attend school, for how long, no one knew, Principal Decort, Ms. Demarsico, and Ms. Slota all said to me, "Go home. Get your son well. We'll do the rest." Over the next several months during Alex's recovery, there were almost daily calls from Ms. Demarsico asking about his progress, how he was doing, what the doctors were saying, calls from Ms. Slota asking how we were holding up as a family, and filling me in on what was needed from Alex so that he could keep moving forward in his schoolwork. Calls from Mr. Decort advising me on what the status of the 504 was and what steps I needed to take regarding Alex's rights during his illness. Each time I thanked them for their considerable efforts, I got the same answer. "It's what I do. It's my job. That's why I'm here." Next month will mark one year where Alex is now symptom-free. It also marks his graduating from the middle school. There's no question in my mind and in my heart that neither of these things would have been possible without the enormous help and support that we received from each of you. This community and school is very lucky to have you here and in its service. Each of you have exhibited great selflessness, integrity, compassion, and care for your students and their families. We're just one of the many families and students that you deal with day in and day out. That's why I could not let this opportunity go by to publicly thank you and acknowledge you in front of your peers. I thank you for being there for my son when he needed you. You will forever be in our hearts. Your kindnesses and generosity of spirit helped us through an extremely difficult time in our lives. When it looked hopeless, you were there for us, as I know you're there for many others in our community, and that will never be forgotten. Thank you. So Alex has some flowers and some things to give to the teachers and some thank-yous. But thank you very much. It's deeply, deeply appreciated, and you have great teachers.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Yeah, same here, same here. Bye-bye. Thanks very much.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna top that tough act to follow with the rest, but we're gonna try. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up to the public for comments for any items that are on the agenda. Seeing none, close that portion of the meeting. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
I have one. I've attended the North End FSA, and just quickly, everybody's wrapping up the year, as we all know, so June 3rd is the Field Day at the North End, so we're looking forward to that. And as of July 1st, we're welcoming and congratulating the new board that will be taking over the North End FSA, and we look forward to seeing everybody back in September.
Thank you.
You had another meeting. We had the Facilities Committee.
We did. I was leaving that up to you because I really didn't want to bring that point up.
We met, the Facilities Committee met with the architect in talking about the North End and South End projects, and as we know, we're replacing the piping for the heating system, and in their inspection, they found that the unit ventilators also all need to be replaced, but with the way that the budget was done, we're able to handle it within the project, so we granted that approval for that change order.
Excellent.
And is that in the meeting minutes this week, that change order?
No, he hasn't finished writing that down yet.
So we'll have it for the next meeting, but that will move forward so that we get those replaced at the same time.
Any other committee reports? Really, Mrs. Dye?
Well, it's not really a committee report, but I did have two items I was just gonna bring up.
Sure, why not?
I think a number of us actually attended the middle school wax museum yesterday morning.
Yes.
And I just wanted to say that I thought it was great, and I thought the students did a really good job, as usual. This is my second one, and it just, some of the characters that everybody picked out, I think, were pretty interesting, so. The presidential election was well-represented as well, so it was actually, it was a really good time. And then also, I just wanted to bring up something that was done at South End and I think North End yesterday, was the Google expeditions that was done at the middle school. Am I stealing your fire? Are you gonna talk about that?
No, a little bit, no, please.
Okay, I'll just, my son's not big on going to school, and so the night before, I showed him the link that Mrs. DiMatteo had sent out regarding the Google expedition and what they were gonna do in school yesterday, and he was actually excited about going, and he came home and talked all about it and what it is. It's a special app, and it's, it actually looks like one of those viewfinders from, like, long ago, and you can download the app, and the teacher can have it where the kids all go someplace, really, really exciting, and it's like they're actually there. And he was extremely excited, came home talking about Fiji and had a great thing, and yeah, and then interesting, somebody else posted today that they got something from Time Magazine, and it was a Google viewfinder, and it was the same exact thing. So now I'm online buying my $15 cardboard box, yes. Oh, that's good to know. Or you can get the fancy version I saw, which is, actually looks like a viewfinder, but it's actually a really, really cool, kind of inspired my little guy, so I thought that was awesome. So anyway, I just thought I would say that I thought that was a good thing. Oh, and one question I did have is, how did we come upon that? Because I know they're beta testing it in schools around the world, so how did we get lucky enough to get chosen?
Yes, well, Mrs. Liddy, our new media specialist, came across this. They're doing it in a neighboring district, Glen Ridge, and her husband is employed there, and she thought this was the greatest thing, that we had to get involved with it, and so we jumped in, and there we go.
She was right, and that's great that she did that, so I thought it was excellent, so.
Yes, thank you. More on that later. Stay tuned.
I'm done now.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have two board presentations this evening. Our first one is from Ms. Lanaris, talking about the STEM summer program. Welcome.
I'm gonna have to move the mic. Stand to the side, just like that. There we go. Thank you for having us tonight. My name's Ms. Lanaris, or Colleen Lanaris. I'm in the middle school. I teach sixth grade Math Plus, and my partner for Explore Science is in the audience as well, Arco Powell, so any questions that either I can't answer, he'll probably jump in or help me with, so that, as we speak. I just came onto this company in January. I've been working for them for two years, and in January, I bought in as one of the partners, and it's been an amazing experience, and we're continuing to always grow and reach new districts and new venues, so when I got the time to enjoy the new courtyard at Memorial Middle School, I was like, this could be a great opportunity for some extra science enrichment. So we are a science enrichment program. We do a lot of STEM activities along with all the realms of science. I'm not gonna read everything that's on the board because I know the board has had the presentation already, so, but it basically breaks it down that we do various programs for rec departments, libraries, birthday parties, as well as different schools and enrichment programs where we bring science to life, and we bring it in a more hands-on way where the students can really get involved in the programs and learn the different realms of science outside of maybe the areas of the classroom. So these are just some of the locations that we are at. This is a very small list compared to the rest of our clientele. Our summer schedule is definitely booking up. Throughout the year, we can be at two, three, even four locations on any given day, doing after-school sessions, or like I said, at the rec departments. And these are just some testimonials from some of our clients that we've been working with for a long time, just to prove, you know, how consistent we are and how the parents and the students, we have a high rate of re-enrollment, so how much they really truly enjoy all of the programs. These are just some of our STEM challenges we've been running. We just left Paquonic Boys and Girls Club, and we did a seven-week program of all different STEM challenges, building from some very basic skills, really focusing on the engineering and the math incorporation to the science that really focuses on the new science standards that are going to be happening for this September and then for elementary next year. We also go into robotics and engineering class. This summer, we're focusing some more on drone flight and experimentation with that, and I'm still experimenting. My house windows can prove that. And we have some computer coding and little bits. We were just at the Verona Green Fair this weekend, and we had our little bits out, which is all electrical circuitry and kind of building and going off of that, and they loved it. I think we had to tell them that the fair was over in order for us to be able to clean up anything. So it's been a huge hit, and the students really enjoy being able to create the things and build the things, and it really just fosters so much of their creativity and their engagement. And then we also do a lot with our physical science, along with chemistry and life science as well, and magnetism. So we would like to bring Explore Science to Cedar Grove and the students throughout, you know, whether it's Cedar Grove or we prefer the area of Verona, Little Falls, and we would like to host a summer camp. So we have two options that we're presenting. Our first option was to do once a week for a camp. We do know that the middle school is the home of everything this summer because of the construction, so we are taking into account that that scheduling and the availability can get a little complicated, as well as the other programs that are already running. So while we do have an option of doing a once-a-week camp where we would feature a lot of our newer programs and utilizing the courtyard, doing a hydroponic system, the drone flight, even some more robotics, I actually prefer option two, where we do a one-week camp. We would come in Monday to Friday for about three hours a day, and the students would have a more in-depth experience and a much longer and engaging time to do the science experiments. And again, we can still keep with the same projects and the same ideas and lessons that we wanted to focus on for the once-a-week camp. So we, I understand Mr. Decort had let me know that the YMCA is at the summer camp. They do offer some science sessions, even though they would be different programs, but that their session ends August 19th. So ultimately, we think it would be great if we could begin August 22nd and run that Monday to Friday and do that camp there, so there's no space issues or scheduling conflicts or even like, science program conflicts. Oh, I will go back. We do have a fee that we have proposed on the board. We are open to discussing that, but these are fees that we have already running in some other science camps, and we would be paying for a per-child fee. So we came up with the $25 per child because in Fair Lawn, we are currently at the rec center after school, and they get $15 per child. That's for a one-hour session for each age group. They don't have the facilities like the courtyard and the greenhouse, and we don't run a long camp like that. Right now, it's just the one-hour camp, so that's where our numbers did come up. So if that was something that was, you know, kind of in question or not sure, that's where we had come up with those fees. And then we are also looking to have a partnership with Cedar Grove to be able to come back throughout the year, so that we can continue to have these kids involved with the programs that they've started, the projects that they've started, and continue growing their science experience. I would really ultimately like to target a lot of the fourth-grade students now who will be incoming fifth graders, so that maybe they can get a chance to enjoy the middle school before being a fifth-grade student, and hopefully that'll help improve the enrollment with the science club as well. So we have just a little proposed schedule of what we would like to do throughout the year, you know, coming in through our summer camp, still can, coming back in the fall. We would always be recapping on what we've done in the summer, as well as expanding on some new programs, so if there was any new students who would like to enroll, they would absolutely be welcome to do that. And our one focus that we really want to get involved with is using the greenhouse to do a hydroponic system. So we would like to be able to utilize that all year and be able to keep it up and get it ready and have the kids really involved in the system on preparing it, winterizing it, starting it the next year, and seeing it from start to finish. And then these are just some of the comparisons between running the once-a-week camp versus the one-week camp. Like I said, I do think that the one-week camp would be a better option just for the availability and the other program situations. Thank you very much. Any questions? Please? I welcome questions.
So the week that you're considering is the August 22nd?
August 22nd.
Because of what else is happening in the building?
Right. The YMCA program ends the Friday, the 19th, so that way I wouldn't interfere with that.
Okay, thank you.
It also makes sense to do it that way because a lot of times, you know, kids have summer camps, and if, for example, if like, one of my, say, my son is in a camp, soccer camp, five days a week, and you already pay for that, and then taking him out of that and putting it in once a week, so I think, I think that the one-week is a better, better option as well.
Absolutely.
I think August is a good time too, because mostly everything's done in July.
Yeah.
It's always July, then there's not really much going on in August, so.
We found through a lot of the rec departments that they have their highest numbers in July because even if you schedule your child for the whole summer, they start doing the family vacations in August, or they take them out to get ready for school, and so those numbers definitely go down. But for a lot of people who don't do the family vacations, or they've already done the one week, and now they have the other three, four weeks to fill, there's definitely a need that parents have been interested in.
What's your prime number in the camp?
For like, the student ratio? We would like to keep it at about 30, but if we had 60 kids...
Oh, wow, that many?
Yeah, if we had 60 kids sign up, we would just have more instructors and more supplies and accommodate any, any need. Yeah, we can make it work.
Sure.
What age range is this for?
The age range that we have our programs for is K to 5 or K to 6. Now, the sixth grade is part of elementary. We can tailor any of our programs to the different grades. We also just ran a preschool program in Paramus, so where we might have some of the same lessons and designs, some of the projects that are more hands-on to be built are a little more prepared for the preschool kids to be able to assemble, whereas the older kids, it's much more, you know, designing and building and creating those. So we tailor it to the grades. Anything else?
Okay.
No other questions?
Questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you. I'll fix the mic for whoever's nice.
Mr. Decort looks getting a little uncomfortable with all the things going in the middle school this summer. He's like, "This, we'll do this, it's all right."
Our next board presentation, thank you, Ms. Lanaris. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Our next board presentation is our superintendent, Mr. Featherman, is here to present to us his three-year plan for our district. So thank you, Mr. Featherman, for doing this. It's something the board has asked Mr. Featherman to prepare and present, and we thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let's take a journey. Let's take the road ahead and talk about our three-year strategic plan for the Cedar Grove School District. So the road has twists and turns, and sometimes it's bumpy, but that's education. That's how we go through this process, so we're excited to share with you our vision for the next three years. So let's do it, shall we? So what I've decided to do is start with a mission statement and our vision statement, and then we'll talk about the pillars of this three-year plan. So the first statement there is our long-adopted mission statement. Perhaps that's something we can edit as this process unfolds, but right now, I adopted what has been in place for a number of years. So what we did create from that point is our vision, to transform the Cedar Grove Public Schools into a progressive learning environment, and in order to do that, we have this instructional plan for student achievement. As you'll see, this plan relies on personalized learning environment. We can't stress that enough. The need for differentiating of instruction, data, and teacher recommendation, so really, those are the three sort of components of the vision. And on top of that, I think it all sort of gets supported by character, right? Good character, and something that we'll refer to tonight as grit. We want our children to struggle with problems, to think critically, but to do so through perseverance and grit, and we'll talk a bit more about that in just a bit. Here's our first pillar, character. So what we have here is the goal statements. So by June 2019, "Our students will demonstrate character by their actions in both the school and community at large." That's always our goal, isn't it? So certainly, it's one of our pillars. So what I have for each of these pillars are three goal statements. By June of 2017, we will form that character committee, and we will conduct a review of all of our school's code of conduct policies and practices. In year two, the committee will make appropriate recommendations based on their findings and rewrite, revise where necessary, those codes of conduct. Again, we're building that framework around character. We want to make sure that we're consistent in that mission. And by year three, by June of 2019, the committee will develop and implement procedures and/or revise what we had done in year two to ensure consistency of the mission. Second pillar, community and communication. By June 2019, the district shall have in place multiple avenues of communication. What are we looking for? As always, feedback from all of our stakeholders regarding student success and how we can measure that within the community. So there's some, some layers here. The first goal statement, by year one, the superintendent and the board, yes, we do this together, we will be hosting a slate of coffee talks, both in the AM and PM, at all of our district schools. We will develop a calendar. We will push that out. We will select two members of the board to serve as that committee, along with myself. There will be special guests along the way, perhaps a town council member or some other politician or community servant to join us, and the idea would be to just open up the floor for any concerns that you may have within your particular district. Or if you have a concern and you're on the North End side of town and we're meeting at South End, feel free to join us as well. The idea is another line of communication. Also, we need to reevaluate our growth projections, and we will do so in the coming year. We will conduct another demographic study, well, not we, we will commission one, and we'll conduct a needs assessment of that study and the possible impacts on our district. Can we accommodate the expected growth from both the Hilltop Project and others that we're hearing about? Year two, by 2018, we will form a committee to research and assess the implementation of a community service requirement. Our thinking right now is have that completed by the end of junior year, and we're kicking around the idea of perhaps providing those who choose to volunteer for this program to wear an honor cord at graduation. How cool is that? Year three goal, by June of 2019, the district will have conducted more night information sessions. We've got some momentum with that, so we anticipate increasing our public exposure. We will conduct an evaluation of existing and possible platforms of communication to increase parental awareness of all manner of issues, and we will develop, deliver, and evaluate a parent's survey to improve upon those existing practices. Any questions on that pillar? Thirdly, curriculum. Goal statement, by June 2019, the district will develop and implement a data-based process for analyzing curriculum, assessing... for analyzing curriculum, assessment, student performance, and professional development to ensure that all professional practice is current, relevant, and aligned to the latest standards. Nowadays, we're calling them the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. We've done away with the common core. More on that in a moment. The year one goal is ambitious, but I can assure you, all of these things are, for the most part, already in place. We've got a lot going on, folks. A lot of good things going on. So what do we have embedded here? All curricular areas will be updated throughout the course of the year to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. All science courses will be aligned to the Next Generation Science Standards, whose implementation is September of 2017, so we have our work cut out for us. We will provide professional development for our science teachers through PRISM at Montclair State University. That stands for Professional Resources in Science and Math. We will expand application of Performance Matters to promote data-driven decision-making. We're up to our eyeballs right now in the Performance Matters platform. We have our goal-setting meeting next week, and so we're very eager to expand that circle of influence. We will pilot the new math program called Connected Math in grade 6. We will expand connections to careers in engineering and STEAM. How so? Well, we're hosting an Engineering Tomorrow program in October. We will launch new STEAM programs at North End and South End this fall. And we will evaluate bringing computer science to Cedar Grove High School. Year two. We will develop and implement a new five-year curriculum plan. It's already in the works. We will conduct an audit of all placement rubrics in grades 7 through 12 to establish a balance between inclusiveness and rigor. We will expand Connected Math to 7th grade, providing support to our science teachers along the way as we implement the Next Generation Science Standards. And last but not least, we will hire a computer science teacher. Lastly, year three, the district shall evaluate math, the programs we have in place, Go Math and Connected Math, and the ELA program, Good Habits, Great Readers, and make recommendations for improvement, change, so forth. We will conduct a review of courses in Phase 2 of the five-year curriculum plan and evaluate progress towards successful implementation of those new science standards. Questions on this pillar? Bless you.
Thank you.
One more. The last pillar, we'll call it college and career readiness. The goal statement, by June 2019, students at all grade levels will demonstrate college and career readiness through the mastery of, say together, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. We all must become familiar with that. How so? Well, we will do so by evaluating the, the performance on common assessments that we're developing in language arts and math. Of course, advanced placement programming, PARC, SAT, ACT, as well as other alternate forms of assessment, whether that's the Accuplacer, the ASFAB, or the portfolio process. What do our goal statements look like? Year, by the end of year one, we will perform data mining of our PARC assessment data using the Performance Matters platform to disaggregate that data. It's important to get that information into each of our teachers' hands so they understand what are, what each of their students' strengths and weaknesses are. And the Performance Matters platform will help us do that. We will align all courses to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, as mentioned earlier. We will continue the application of College Board's AP Potential Platform to ensure optimal AP offerings at CGHS. We will evaluate ongoing after-school teacher academies at North End and South End. We have a robust program that's offered after-school on a voluntary basis, and we will evaluate how that programming is going. And we will use results of our technology survey that we're looking to launch this summer to identify focus areas, and last but not least, investigate that power of grit. Year two. We will expand the use of teacher academies at the middle school and the high school. We will conduct a needs assessment of the use of Deciles ranking at the high school. We will engage faculty and community members in a discussion of grit and its connection to student achievement. We will explore short biographies of graduates who overcame obstacles and share their stories of perseverance. Let's bring those folks back that have demonstrated the grit and have become successful. Let's hear their stories. Year three, let's explore an online course requirement for Cedar Grove High School students to promote blended learning experiences, to access court content whenever and wherever. We're going to enable students to customize their personal learning to better prepare them for today's global workforce. Any questions on that pillar? Will we meet our goals? Most certainly. And there we have it, the road ahead. Thank you. Any questions on the road ahead?
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Featherman.
You're welcome.
Very ambitious but doable set of, uh, goals and, and standards you're, you're putting forth. And we look forward to the next couple of years.
Likewise.
Can we get the lights back on when you're done, Joe? As soon as the lights come on, we'll move on the agenda. So I can see what I'm reading.
Right.
Okay, let's move on the agenda from the office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under minutes. May I have a motion for items B1 through B4? B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of May 10th, 2016. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of May 2016. B3 is a motion to approve the treasurer's and board secretary's reports for the month of April 2016. And B4 is a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the Administrative Code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line, line item appropriation in violation of the code. May I have a mo, uh, motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Saccala?
Yes.
Uh, under bills, may I have a motion for B5, which is a motion to pay the list of bills that was provided to us in our packet?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Saccala?
Yes.
Under business, may I have a motion for items B6 through B16? B6 is a motion to approve the 2016-2017 professional service contract with Vanguard Medical Group. They are the school district's physician, and they also perform new employee physicals and drug screenings. B7 is a motion to appoint Bolinger Insurance as insurance carrier for student and athletic accident insurance coverage for the 2016-2017 school year at the rate set forth therein. B8 is a motion to approve NAETI to provide environmental consultant professional services for the 2016-2017 school year as set forth in that item. B9 is a motion to approve AHERA Consultants as the indoor quality, air quality consultant for the Cedar Grove Board of Education. Uh, the cost for those services for the 2016-2017 school year is set forth therein. B10 is a motion to approve AHERA Consultants as the provider of designated person services for the 2016-2017 school year. The cost for that service is set forth in that item. B11 is a motion to approve New Jersey Wild Geese Control Incorporated to provide canine patrol of all walkways, parking lots, and grassy areas for the sole purpose of chasing Canada geese for the 2016-2017 school year at the cost set, cost set forth therein. B12 is a motion to approve Handy Lift Service Company Incorporated to provide elevator service at Cedar Grove High School for the 2016-2017 school year at the cost set forth in that item. B13 is a motion to approve Dial Pest Control to provide pest and termite management services for the 2016-2017 school year at the cost set forth therein. B14 is a motion to accept the MMS FSA donation of services from A Priori and Sun Painters to paint the burgundy wall in the, in the gymnasium to an off-white and the blue stage surround to black at a, at a cost of $1,600. This place, this work will take place on the Friday of Memorial Day weekend. B15 is a motion to approve ML Incorporated's Change Order Application Number 1 in the amount of $9,970.65 to remove incorrect wiring in the Cedar Grove High School auditorium. Uh, this is part of the Cedar Grove High School Auditorium 2014 Bond Referendum Project. And B16 is a motion to approve the 2016-2017 tuition rates for approved regular education out-of-district students as set forth therein. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Saccala?
Yes.
May I have a motion for items B17 through B24? B17 is a motion to approve the 2016-2017 school year substitute rate of pay per diem at, as set forth in that item. B18 is a motion to retroactively approve the 2015-2016 annual service agreement with the Centrus Group and JLLC in the amount set forth therein. B19 is a motion to approve ML Incorporated's Payment Application Number 3 in the amount of $375,227.30 for work done at the Cedar Grove High School. Payment for this application will be from the Cedar Grove Board of Education 2014 Bond Referendum. B20 is a motion to approve the following staff or the, sorry, to approve the staff set forth therein as instructors for the 2016, 2016 Cedar Grove Middle School Summer Program. B21 is a motion to approve Stephen David Entertainment Incorporated to use the Memorial Middle School to film the second season of Shadow of Doubt. Uh, the details are set forth in that item. B22 is a motion to approve, uh, parent transportation contracts for the 2016-2017 school year as set forth for those students identified therein by student ID number. B23 is a motion to approve Bryant, Gemza, Canoy, and Kolik Educational Consultants to perform a quantitative and qualitative examination of the district's Special Education Department Review. Uh, the cost for that service shall not exceed $25,000. And B24 is a motion to approve ML Incorporated's Change Order Application Number 2 in the amount of $42,525 for 2,835 square feet of bathroom tile for four bathrooms at the Cedar Grove High School. Funding for this payment is from the contract allowance for the Cedar Grove High School Auditorium 2014 Bond Referendum Project. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
And Mr. Saccala?
Yes.
Think you're up again, sir.
Yes.
Maybe superintendent support ready for us this evening?
Yes.
All right, Joe. I'm stumped. Oh, I see it. Very sophisticated, but effective. That's the reason. So what I like to do each month is provide in words and pictures a synopsis of the monthly report, which is an extensive sort of recap of the last month's educational activities. There are extra copies on the side table. Please feel free. We post these on the district's website as well for your review. So let's talk about the report this month. Let's talk about first, college and career readiness, as we like to do. We have three pillars here as well. Some of the highlights from the report. Well, students at South End, as we've mentioned before, are still hard at work talking about their future college and careers. It's never too soon to start talking about this topic. And so at South End, they're using their literary magazine to promote their hopes and dreams for the future. The middle school career day is set to take place for 7th and 8th graders, as many of you know, on May 26th. We have a diver, a diverse group of professionals that will be offering their services. Students will six, will view six presenters, three of which are of their choice. Some more highlights. Students at North End, South End, and Memorial Middle School, as you heard earlier, took a virtual field trip, thanks to Google Expeditions. Let's take a look at what that is.
I'm Nicholas Decourt, the principal at Memorial Middle School. And we're talking about Google Expeditions. We are so excited to have the opportunity to partake in this pilot program that was brought to our school on, uh, Friday. And it is absolutely amazing to watch students be able to transport from the classroom across the world all before lunch. Basically, what Google Expeditions is, is a virtual reality tour consisting of a cardboard viewer, a cellphone brought to us by Google. And our students are able to participate in all different adventures. For example, we did a lunar phase, uh, adventure and the students were able to sit down on Mars as well as view Earth and different planets in the solar system. They were also able to be transported underwater to a shark adventure and learn a little bit about our ecosystem, uh, as well as travel through the Amazon. Google right now has approximately 300 expeditions for students to partake in. And what they're doing is coming out to schools and gathering feedback to advance this technology. What was amazing about this technology is teachers were able to assess the entire class equipped with an iPad. And they were able to point out and highlight different points of interest for the students to navigate. And it was just amazing to watch.
Africa. Under the ocean. Europe. Washington DC.
The right force. I liked how wherever you looked with the, um, camera, it went there with you.
I liked how it felt like how real it was, like it wasn't just like a picture, like just on screens and you actually felt like you were at the place. My favorite part was like that, like it showed like all the little details on the camera and it wasn't really that clear so you could see everything.
I like how really it all looks like so real that like you made, made you feel like you were part of it.
I like to be able to get a full view of many places I've never seen before.
Whenever like you were looking into the phone and you turned, there was something always new popping up on the screen so you could look more.
And this technology would be absolutely beneficial in our classroom. I can just envision it now, our teachers going through a concept in front of the class and then in two or three minutes, being able to distribute this technology to students and just transport them there immediately. And you can see, as I said before, the engagement. It was amazing for adults as well as students. And you literally feel that you are there in the environment. This is unbelievable for visual learners, uh, for learners that sometimes might lose focus. It just seemed that it captured everyone's attention. And it was so tangible for students to really visualize what the teacher was instructing.
Special thank you to Joe Morabito for putting that together for us. Thank you, Joe. And of course, thank you, Mr. Decourt. We had this program brought to North End and South End on Monday. You just can't say enough about it. It was just phenomenal. Moving on. So what about our middle school math team? Well, success. They're called the Aftermath, coordinated by our gifted and talented teacher, Mrs. Hill. They performed very well. I mean, they took tests that consisted of a series of math prompts. They were graded and compared with the results of students across the world. We're proud to announce that our team received a second-place award in the Junior International Division, and 8th grader Joseph Mazinski received the highest scoring student award. Fantastic. On April 25th, Congressman Freling Heisen was at Memorial Middle School, along with a member of the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, Commander Chris Sloan. He visited the 7th grade class to talk about his career as a NOAA expert, hurricane hunter. Students were provided the opportunity to explore tools that are part of his profession. How cool is that? How about some press for the high school? This just in, the 2014 cohort of AP students ranked 42nd in the state on their performance on the AP test last year, with an 84.1% student score of three or higher. The 2015-16 school year, CGHS had 67 students take the AP tests, with 149 tests taken. Our current projection for next year has us at 77 students, and we're sure to break the record of 149 tests. So under the leadership of Mr. Mangili, our AP program is blossoming. How about some legal updates? As you may have heard, the State Board of Education has adopted a new version of the Common Core. Can anyone help me with that, new version, anybody? The New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So just a bit about that. I won't go into the details, but basically, it's a modification of the current Common Core. The report talks a bit about the shifts, not dramatic, but they're outlined in the report. Another legal update, the DOE settled a lawsuit concerning the 2016 graduation cohort, made some changes to how those students were demonstrating their graduation testing requirement. So you can read more about that, again, in the report. Just as an update, all of our current members of the 2016 class have met their testing graduation requirement, so we're pleased to announce that, all of them. That's not to say all of them will graduate. PS, they still have to meet the Cedar Grove local graduation requirement, but all of them have met their testing requirement for graduation. How about a quick referendum update? I don't know, how often can you look at dirt, but there's a few pictures of dirt here, so bear with me. So besides the dirt, we do have some exciting things going on. We chose the flooring, the upholstery, the paint, tile for our auditorium, the office spaces, the bathrooms at Cedar Grove High School, North End and South End, and as you'll see, construction's well underway for our new turf field. You can check out our website for other referendum photos, but here's just a quick taste of what that may look like. Again, this used to be our track here, as this truck is coming around the bend here and running the 400. We've got some more dirt being moved. This is a view from, basically, from center field, looking out. The snack shack used to be right about here. Our bleachers used to be here, bleachers and our press box. And lastly, we've got some major, major digging going on. This is where the field will literally lie with our drainage. So pretty cool things going on. And just a quick mention of some community outreach going on throughout our district. On the 18th, the CGHS peer leaders held our annual senior citizens prom, which is always a big hit. We had over 50 seniors that danced the night away, played bingo. It's just a nice way of inviting our seniors into the community, into the high school. The annual art shows were held at North End and South End. I saw many of you there. We had literally hundreds of families in attendance, and they were all so remarkably impressed with our students' talents. A few more. How about a quick thank you to the South End FSA for their amazing cultural arts performance, Mexico Beyond Mariachi. More of that is outlined in the report. And of course, the Friday Folder, and how you reach our administrators, or follow them, rather, on Twitter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Featherman. So I guess when my kindergartner told me that there was a mariachi band at the school the other day...
You didn't believe him?
No, I didn't believe her, and now I... Eggs on my face, I guess. Are the pictures from the construction, are they going up anywhere online? Do we post them?
Yes, we have. On our Board of Ed website, you can click on Referendum 2014, and you'll see many, many, many more photos of what's going on. Dirt, destroyed bleachers, sheet rock, things like that.
Great.
No, Ms. Featherman, I just want to thank you, too. I just said to Ms. Burke that these are so much more enjoyable, your superintendent -- not yours, superintendent reports in general have become very...
I aim to please.
I like, no, it's good. I like the visual. I'm a visual learner, so I love that. So thanks for doing that.
Okay, let's move on the agenda. Under Personnel, may I have a motion for items S1 through, we're going to go all the way to S15, I'm sorry, S16. S1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report that we just witnessed. S2 is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from May 10, 2016. S3 is a motion to approve Mia Palma Memorial Middle School maternity leave replacement effective May 25, 2016, at the rate and step as set forth therein. S4 is a motion to accept the resignation of Rafael Loracent, custodian at the high school, effective July 31, 2016. S5 is a motion to appoint the staff as set forth therein in accordance with the state emergent hiring procedures. And I will note that one of those is Daniel Cassis Novas, who is being appointed with our approval tonight as the head varsity football coach. S6 is a motion to appoint the staff as set forth therein for summer custodial maintenance work at the rate set forth in that item. S7 is a motion to approve the substitute teacher set forth in that item for the 2015-2016 school year. S8 is a motion to approve the teacher set forth therein for 2015-2016 stipend positions, and those positions are also set forth in that item.
Yeah, I was going to ask there after.
Should that be 2016-2017?
Actually, no. We had Mrs. Metjam Pell left middle of the year, so we had to parse out that stipend to the new staff, Olivia Miller and Michelle Zanella, so that's for the current school year.
Thank you. S9 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the tenured administrative staff members as set forth in that item. S10 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the non-tenured administrative staff members eligible for tenure, shown in that item for the 2016-2017 school year. S11 is a motion to reemploy and set the salaries for the non-tenured administrative staff members as set forth therein for the 2016-2017 school year. And S12 is a motion to approve the stipend positions for the 2016-2017 school year for the high school co-curricular activities, and also for Memorial Middle School advisors, for the North End Elementary School advisors, and the South End School advisors. And all of those staff members are set forth in those items. S13 is a motion to reimburse the school-based volunteer as set forth therein as per Policy 9180. S14 is a motion to approve the parents set forth therein as school volunteers. S15 is a motion to authorize attendance at the event set forth in that item. And S16 is a motion to approve the leave of absence as set forth in that item. May I have a motion for those items, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? May I have roll call, please?
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Sikala?
Yes. Under policies and regulations, may I have a motion for S17? S17 is a motion to approve, on second reading, the policy updates and revisions that Mr. Featherman reviewed with us at our last meeting, and we approved at that time on first reading. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved. Sorry. Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Sikala?
Yes. Under Curriculum, may I have a motion for S18? That's a motion to approve the revised and realigned curricula for the 2015-2016, the current school year.
Correct.
As set forth in that item. May I have a motion for that item, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Sikala?
Yes. May I have a motion for S19? That's a motion to approve the contracts for the 2016-2017 school year for special education students as recommended by the Director of Special Services, and those contracts are set forth and itemized in that item. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Sikala?
Yes. The meeting is now open to the public for comment for items on or off the agenda. Seeing none, close that portion of the meeting. Our announcement of future meetings, did we decide that we're going to do away with, we can't do June 6th? So we're not going to have a meeting in the week of June 6th. Our next meeting will be June 14, 2016, in the North End Media Center, 7:00 PM executive session, 8:00 PM regular meeting. And I guess if we need another meeting in June after graduation, we'll talk about that at the next meeting. Board have any final comments this evening? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Mandela?
Aye.
Mr. Pavulovich?
Yes.
And Mr. Sikala?
Yes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Thank you. 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 Thank you.